To the special meeting of the Oroville City Council, July 20th, 2021. I'm calling this meeting to order. You stand, oh, can I have the roll, please?
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Riggs?
Here.
Councilmember Hatley?
Here.
Councilmember Goodson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Mayor Reynolds?
Here.
Will you stand with me for the Fledge of Allegiance? Salute, pledge. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'd move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion carries with six yeses and one absent.
Let the record show that Vice Mayor Thompson is here. Do you want to vote on this item? Accepting the agenda?
Yes, sir. Yes.
The motion carries for the adoption of the agenda with seven yeses and zero no's.
Okay, moving on to regular business. We have one item, NHA Advisors' Presentation Regarding the Unfunded Pension Liability.
Good evening, Mayor Reynolds and councilmembers. We have a short presentation from NHA Advisors, Eric Scriven, the principal there. It's going to be a very short presentation, reviewing some of the things we've already discussed and going over some new things. But basically, at the end of this workshop, we're going to be looking for direction to see if you want to pursue something like this. So, we want to make sure that you have all of the information you need to make a thorough and informed analysis before we decide whether to take this risk or not. So, I'll hand it over to Eric.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council and staff. As Ruth mentioned, we put together a nine-page presentation which is meant to review the background, as well as the options and objectives, and importantly, once again, discuss the risks. We've got a couple of slides in there. You've perhaps seen them before. Behind the nine pages, I did also attach the July, the June 9th presentation, which was lengthier, in case there's questions that we want to reference some of those pages. I just want to make sure that we're prepared for all of the questions. But it should be a fairly quick run-through. I have, can I share my screen?
Yes, you can.
No, it does not say that I can. There we are. Did that, did that work? We wanted to review why we're here, which really is, you know, stating the obvious. The city has a $24.9 million unfunded accrued liability with CalPERS, and that has grown rapidly over the last seven or eight years, and in fact, over the last 15 years. You also have an outstanding pension obligation bond that you issued, the city issued in 2007, outstanding amount of $2.8 million. The, like most public agencies in the state of California, these unfunded liabilities have risen rapidly over the last decade or more. And for many communities, particularly in years where revenues have been stagnant, and in years perhaps when revenues are growing, but these costs are growing faster, there's the concern that these annual year-over-year cost increases to repay this unfunded liability can crowd out other community priorities. So, we've been talking about a number of cost management strategies that the city of Oroville does do and has done. And the idea is that the restructuring of this unfunded liability with CalPERS may also be a useful tool to, in addition to the other cost management strategies that the city has undertaken, might be a useful tool. And additionally, as we all know, the interest rates, we probably would not be discussing this, if interest rates were at 5.5% or thereabouts percent. But right now, interest rates are near all-time lows. They've continued to be very low. Right now, they're in the 3% to 3.5% range. It depends on the credit and the length of term that is selected for the restructuring transaction. And over the last 18 months, there's been over 50 public agencies, mostly cities, some counties, and a number of special districts that have executed these UAL restructurings during the, as I said, the last 18 months. So, given the low rates and these increasing year-over-year payments upon your CalPERS unfunded liability, the idea is that this debt can be restructured to a level, more predictable repayment schedule, and save based on taking out 7% CalPERS debt with lower, say, 3.5% bond rate, there is the potential to save a significant amount of money. The city can restructure this debt using any amount of that $24.9 million. You can create whatever repayment shape the city deems prudent. On the shape, whether you do a level, you can choose to do a level or slightly ascending payment. On the repayment term, you can choose to do a 20, 25, 30-year, or whatever the city council deems prudent. On the amount, the city can choose to refinance and restructure that full $24.9 million, or it can choose to refinance and restructure a lesser amount. In general, the more of the CalPERS UAL that is taken out, if you will, refinanced, swapping out the 7% for a lower bond rate of 3.5% or thereabouts, the longer the term that you do, you create a lower repayment schedule, and that repayment schedule in general is, becomes a more resilient structure to deal with if there are, and we know there will be, future economic shocks, where your revenues are stagnant or reduced, as well as the likelihood of CalPERS underperforming in any particular year on their reinvestment, and therefore adding a new layer of unfunded liability debt. As discussed in detail during the couple of previous workshops, there is an unavoidable risk when you undertake a UAL restructuring using a pension bond, and that is reinvestment risk and market timing risk. If CalPERS does poorly with its reinvestment of the additional monies given to them by the city, and in essence, the proceeds of the pension bond, this can potentially mean that the city is worse off having executed a transaction. The way to think about this is, the rule of thumb is, if, over the length of the term of the bond issue, that CalPERS earns less than the bond rate, then the city would have been worse off executing a transaction. Additionally, if CalPERS has a bad reinvestment year in the early part of the timeframe after a pension bond is issued, say, one to, one, two, or three years out, then, of course, this amplifies the loss. You would have lost money because you have assets with CalPERS already, but the additional monies would also amplify that loss, and therefore, it creates the need, over the long-term, over the length of the term of the bond issue, that the CalPERS would need to earn more than the bond rate to make the city whole, and at the end of the term, looking back to consider the transaction a success. I'd like to stop there for a moment and ask again if there are any questions on the objectives of such a transaction, and most particularly, the potential risks.
I have a question.
Councilmember Riggs?
Thank you. One of the risks you speak of is if CalPERS earns less than the bond rate. Do you know in recent history if that's occurred?
Great question. Back in 2008 and 2009, they had a couple of very bad years where they earned under 3.5%. In fact, one year, I think they lost, lost 20%, and I think the next year was around 10. So, since then, of course, we know there's been a rally in the market, and generally speaking, there's been a higher average rate of return than a 3.5%. In fact, I have that statistic, if you'd like to see it on, in the appendix. Be glad to show it to you.
Thank you.
So, up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see that the averages over the five- and 10-year horizon have been above 3.5%. 10 years, as we know, since the Great Recession, there's been a great bull market in equities, and generally speaking, in all asset classes, including real estate. And even over the last five years, we've seen that it's been above 3.5%. Wouldn't really look at the 20- and 30-year averages. Those, I think, were in a new era, if you will, in reinvestments, where generally speaking, I think most investment professionals would say we're in a lower rate of return environment. And I think you all have heard the chatter from CalPERS about them, the board revisiting the fact that they want to perhaps lower the CalPERS discount rate from 7% to something lower. And we can get into that detail if you would like. As we all know, CalPERS just reported a banner year of 21% earnings for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. If I may alter the page, this is the city of Oroville's repayment shape on its unfunded liability with CalPERS, and we've layered on the pension obligation bond that you have outstanding. And as you can see, the unfunded liability has more than doubled over the last seven years, and that's created a really irregular and ascending repayment shape. This goes back to 2015, but if you look at 2021, 2022, you're going to have that pension bond that's outstanding fall away, but you still have ascending payments from 2023, or I should say, 2024, through and including 2032, 2033, and 2034. So, that, the cumulative effect of those payment increases over fiscal 2020 levels is approximately $5.8 million. And we do know that there'll be a new base layered on in this next fiscal year from the 4.7% return that CalPERS had in the fiscal year ending 2020. So, that is not shown here. It'll marginally increase this. And two years from now, we will have the benefit, or the city will have the benefit of that 21% increase that they just booked and reported last week, actually. So, that should lower this overall repayment schedule. Everything just sort of lowers down. The shape is still the same, but everything will lower unless CalPERS takes some of that 21% gain and does some things with their assumptions, for instance, lowering the discount You've all seen this sheet before. We didn't change the numbers. The market is very strong right now, but we want to be conservative. There's three options that are shown here, not to make a decision if you decided to move forward, but mainly to illustrate how the city of Oroville could restructure its unfunded liability and also refinance those three years remaining on the pension bond that are at 5%, 5.5%, I believe, to create a more level and predictable repayment schedule through the 20- or 30-year time horizon, depending on what the city might choose if it wanted to proceed forward. These numbers and the bars that show the existing unfunded liability repayment shape assume a 7% return. That's the assumption that CalPERS shows currently. We do know that they're going to change that likely in November, but this is the snapshot right now. So, these are the numbers that are, I'm sorry, was there a question?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. These are the numbers that are produced from these three lines. Again, the comparison figure is if CalPERS earns 7% on its rate of return through the term of this analysis, these would be the savings if you restructured $19 million of the $24.9 million to create a funded ratio of 92%. We've shown three scenarios, a 20-year level, and on the right side, a 25-year level in the orange. And then, there's the middle one, a 22-year, that has a 1% ascending line, just to show the differences. As you can see, the savings are very strong if CalPERS earns at 7%. I would stress that if CalPERS earns less than 7%, the savings figures would be less. But the, you can see that the length of term, there's an interesting thing that occurs here, as we've stated in previous workshops, where you have the shorter, the 20-year transaction that's level, you can see that the cumulative savings, the third line from the bottom, are $6.5 million versus the 25-year restructuring, where the savings would be $3.2 million. The reason is, you have some years, because you have a longer term, you have some years on the back end where you're making debt service payments, where previously, you had no unfunded liability payments being made to CalPERS. And the time value of money being what it is, the present value savings, when you discount the savings, they're pretty close. The 25-year is about $5.3 million on the right, and the present value savings on the 20-year is about $5.8 million. One of the interesting points to be made here is, if you're restructuring, you're trying to create some resiliency to be able to absorb an economic shock where you have stagnant or reduced revenues, or CalPERS has a very bad year and layers on a new level or layer of debt, the longer term creates a more headroom, if you will. And the average savings for the first 14, 15 years, on the right side, you can see the longer term, you have an $865,000 average annual savings versus the 20-year is $628,000 average annual savings. So, it creates more room to have a longer term, as I had stated upfront, and it creates a more resilient structure to absorb these types of possibilities if there's economic calamity or CalPERS has a bad year. Any questions?
I don't think so.
So, we wanted to illustrate once again, when I say CalPERS has a bad year, we're just, we're going to show two slides to that effect. If CalPERS has a 10% hit in year one, you give them the money, there's going to be a new base layered on, whether you issue a bond or not. If you do not issue a bond, you're going to have, the gray bars is your outstanding CalPERS, you know, payment schedule, and you would add on the black bars if you had not done a transaction with a 10% hit. That would be the new base, if they had a 10%, a negative 10% return. If you had done a transaction where, I think we're using $19 million transaction, so you gave them an additional $19 million and they had that bad year in the first year that you gave them the money, you would go from the nice, flat, orange line in this 30-year, 25-year POB scenario, it would rise, the new layer that would be added would be the dotted orange line. And it's important to understand that you're going to have a new layer, whether you do a transaction or not, but if you give them more money and they have a bad year right out of the gate, or out of the first several years, or consistently underperform, that, giving them that extra money and they underperform, has the potential of creating, in retrospect, at the, at the end of 25 years, look back, a regret that you may have had not had the benefit of the transaction.
Excuse me, Eric, we have a question from councilmember, councilmember Smith?
Yeah, so when you say "bad year," what is, quantify that? So, that new amount?
CalPERS is targeting right now, they assume that they're going to earn 7% every year. So, to the extent that they do not hit their target, in this instance, they're 10% below, so it would be a minus 3% return year, they would add on a new base. In fact, in fiscal '20, they earned 4.7%, which is slightly under the 7% number, so this current, next fiscal year, there will be a new base layer, I should say, added on to your existing repayment shape, the gray bars. Of course, they just earned 21% in this most recent fiscal year, so that is going to be factored in in two years, and that would be a negative base, so everything would be reduced.
A follow-up question, if I will. In the Great Recession, or '08, '09, what, did you say, negative 20?
Negative 20.
Okay. So, I mean, certainly, the market has that potential, and just maybe in your own analysis, maybe it'll help all of us. So, you know, in this market that we're currently in, you know, some economists say that it's over, you know, overinflated, and an adjustment is coming. What say you? And so, if we're buying in right now, I'm just thinking, yeah, right? I want to know if I need to run out and buy some stock or not after the...
Yeah, no, I'm not the one, I probably wouldn't be before you this afternoon if I had a crystal ball on the market, interest rates or stocks. I think it's a fair question, it's a very good question, and as your municipal advisor, we are, we want to be very cautious, because everyone who put money into the market last year is looking really, really good. They're feeling really good about the transaction. So, right now, are we at a top? Is CalPERS going to be able, over the near-term and long-term, to be able to exceed not just the bond rate, but, you know, the discount rate that they're assumed, 7%? Or if they decide to lower it to 6.5? Is that a target that they're able to hit? I truly can't answer that question for you. I can say that the chances of the transaction being of benefit and positive for the city greatly increases the lower that bond rate is. So, if we're at 3%, 3.5%, there, you know, there's the ability to stress-test that, have an actuary look at it and give you some probabilities. But if the city decided to proceed with this, I think we would be talking about strategies with staff to, you know, there are some strategies, perhaps the idea of dollar-cost averaging, which is, you know, doing half now and half a year from now, or, there's different strategies that the city could employ to, or you could just issue a lower amount to put less at work now. We think it's a valid question that we want to be mindful and thoughtful about before we go into the market.
This is my follow-up to the follow-up question, and that, and you've kind of answered that. So, you see volatility in the market, and it looks like things aren't going our way, but, you know, we've already voted on this, we've had the bonds issued, we don't have to give them the whole lump, $19 million, all in one shot, we can retain, hold that back and look for a more opportune time to invest? Is that what you're saying?
I am saying that. I think that if the city decides to proceed, you're still going, the city council is still going to have control. If you want to proceed, then you, you know, you have your staff and your team ready, ready to transaction. It could be half, it could be a full amount, you could wait six months, you know, to see how things shake out. Those are the types of conversations I think we need to have.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions? So, we did a second slide, there's, just to show you 10% hit in year one, or 20% hit. I think the 20% negative return in the first year, we showed that to city council in the last workshop, but you can, you can see that doing a transaction or not doing a transaction, the black bars will come irregardless if you, if you do not do a transaction, just because you have assets with CalPERS that have had a negative 10% or 20% return, if that's what happened. So, the fact is, if you do a transaction, you would have more assets with CalPERS, more money with CalPERS. So, again, that market timing risk is there if they underperform in the early years of the, after the transaction. We just wanted to make sure that that concept is very clear. Your city manager thought that was very important to reemphasize. So, the next steps are, if the city council decides to... So the next steps are, if the city council decides to proceed and undertake a transaction or ready a transaction to go to the market, would be to hire a bond lawyer. We think that your existing paperwork on the 2007 pension obligation bond will allow you to undertake a new one if you decide to proceed without having to go through the courts again. But we, you know, of course, we're not lawyers, so we want to have someone look that over. We have not done that up to this point, because city council hadn't decided to proceed. And so July, there would be some work by the bond lawyer, assuming that the paperwork is good and you can proceed without going to the courts, then the legal documents and the disclosure documentation would begin to be prepared. And then in August, we'd try to fill out the team with the underwriter, you know, the banker that would take the bonds to the market. We'd also get the credit documentation together. And during that time, we would also come through staff to city council to get your decisions on your preferred structure, whether you want to do 100%, a lesser amount, 20, 25-years level ascending. Those are some of the things that would be decided upon by city council. And we think it's very important that the city adopt a pension funding policy, and we've got some ideas on that, whether you do a transaction or not. And then in September, we would have the credit rating presentation.
Eric, we have a question. Councilmember Smith?
Sorry. Just to give us a glimpse of, right now, we're obviously going underwater annually. So we're at this, you know, larger 20-plus million. How much annually do we need to kick in to where we're at a break-even point on an average basis for CalPERS at this current moment? So that we're not seeing this continual...
That's impossible to tell, because it depends on the return of CalPERS. I mean, if it's a, if they meet their goal of 7%, you know, then we, it doesn't increase if we pay our annual, what we've collected and have to pay. If they don't, then that will go up, and every year, that could be different.
Right. But I guess it's just because all of these are assumptions. Everything here is an assumption.
That's correct.
Correct. So just assuming things continue on the current trajectory that we've seen over the last decade, what would be, kind of, I mean, we're at this 20, whatever it is, 20-something million, just...
Well, I think the slides have shown us that over the last, I believe it was the last 10 years, we have doubled. We went from 12 million to 24 million.
Twenty-four.
So I mean, if that gives you kind of an idea...
Yeah, so we're about 1.2, 1.3, somewhere in there, probably just, you know...
About $2 million a year.
Or even worse than that, okay.
Somewhere in there. Plus, you know, you've got to consider the 2 million that the unfunded liability has increased, and we've also been paying our annual payments, plus we've been paying an extra million dollars. So I mean, it is, we've been doing our best to combat that, but it still continues to rise at that pace.
And so this whole project, you're essentially stating the obvious, is designed to put to bed what's happened over the, the damage that's occurred over the last decade.
But we'll be really clear on that, we're not putting it to bed. This is not a mortgage. You don't get rid of that debt.
Yeah.
What you do is you pay it down, and then if you could use the bucket analogy, you have the one bucket that you're paying on the 19 million on, then you'd have your other bucket where the 5 million's at, and that 5 million can change every year, unless Eric has something more to add to that.
Yeah, that's a bad use of terms on my part.
Exactly right. The idea, I think, there is the strong potential of savings, just given where interest rates are, and CalPERS, even if they underperform the 7%, but still earn 5.5% or something of that nature, that's still above the 3.5%. Time will tell if that's what they're able to do. But to me, the, an equal, important objective of this is to restructure this debt so that it is more affordable, and it's more resilient to potential future shocks from CalPERS underperforming and adding layers, or, you know, the economy creating stagnant revenues for the city in the, you know, in the short term or over the long term, we just don't know. So it creates a more resilient resilience for the city to make this payment while also carrying on its other priorities.
Councilmember Pittman has a question.
Thank you. Eric, have you seen in other situations where cities have gone through this process that you suggest, the legislature taking a look at changing some rules to diminish or restrict this type of activity?
I have not. No, I have not. The pension obligation bond law, you know, where you go to the courts to validate the transaction, and the reason you do that is CalPERS is a debt on your, the city's balance sheet, but it needs to be validated, because it's a different kind of debt. But it is there, and so you go to the courts to validate that that is a debt that is imposed by law. That's the terminology that the lawyers use. Once you've validated it, and the court has essentially adjudicated that and said it is a debt, then you have the ability to refinance that debt without running afoul of the Constitution. And the City of Oremville has already gone through that validation process when it did its 2007 pension obligation bond. We feel pretty sure that it's going to be fine to proceed, but we need to have a lawyer look it over.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, every time a local government gets a good deal, the legislature goes after it. So I ask that just for being the pessimist of the past. Thank you.
I mean, there was a lot of pension transactions done in the early 2000s, where CalPERS target discount rate was 8% or, you know, 7 and 3/4%. And those transactions were issued at 5.5%, 6%. And now, CalPERS is trying to inch down to a lower discount rate of like 6.5%. So the 6% transactions don't look so good, and a lot of those were done where they weren't callable, you know, you couldn't redeem them, so they're stuck with those. That's not the type of transaction that gets done anymore, especially with the lower rates right now, so...
Eric, if I could just ask a question for the council. This type of a bond, if we were to do this, and the city were to somehow have some sort of windfall, is there an early payment or prepayment penalty associated with these bonds?
Usually, these transactions are issued with a 10-year lockout, if you will, and after 10 years, you can redeem them at par. Essentially, only, you can just pay them off after 10 years. That's a standard type of bond transaction in, you know, whether you're issuing a POB or, you know, a sewer bond. So if you want to have a shorter redemption period, typically, the investors who are buying those bonds want to be paid for that in the form of a slightly higher interest rate. Usually, that's the case. But, you know, we always try to ask those questions when you go to the markets, see if there's an ability to narrow down that call protection for the investor.
If we understand the process correctly, the next step would be to hire the bond attorney to start looking into what our obligations are as far legally, if we've been validated or not with this debt. But then from there, we're not obligating ourselves to anything at this point, and we are not obligating ourselves until such time as we lock in the interest rate. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. The city has not committed to a transaction until you sign that agreement with the underwriter, the bond purchase agreement, on the date that they sell the bonds to investors. That's right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Eric?
I think that we've gone through this process well. I'm appreciative that you indulged me, and I feel like it's part of my job to go through. It's pretty, these are the most complex bond issues that are out there, in my opinion, so it's important for the decision-makers to have all the information to make good decisions. So thank you for indulging me on that.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any blue speaker cards for this special meeting.
Do we have any more questions from the dais? So we're, Mr. LaGrange, you're looking for direction to proceed as presented?
Yes, we're looking for, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I don't know if we're going to vote on this, or if we were through consensus, if you would like us to proceed forward. I think this is a very important issue for our city. This is probably the most important issue, quite honestly, that we face, is this debt that is out there that we have to take care of. As I look at this and evaluate this, this is the least bad option. I don't think that there is any really good option in this, because everything, there's nothing that we're going to lock in, and we're going to absolutely know for sure. We are taking a chance, we are trying to make an educated decision here. We believe that's why it was important to have Eric here at least three times to try to provide the information to the council, because this is a very difficult decision for the council to make, because like I said, it's the least bad option. So we have to evaluate this, decide what you'd like us to do, and move forward. Again, moving forward today does not obligate you to anything at this point, it just allows us to gather more information to bring back to you, and probably not as lengthy of these type of workshops or anything like that, but to bring back so you can better evaluate before you make your final decision. So we're looking forward, what you would like to do. Your options are, we can move forward, we can do nothing.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to direct staff to move forward as presented?
I move that we direct staff to move forward with collecting more data so that we can make a well-informed decision.
Does that mean moving forward with the recommendation with...
The bond attorney?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
The motion carries with seven yeses and zero noes.
Well, thank you, Eric. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Have a nice day.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could take a break now for 15 minutes, and we can begin our closed session, we can open up our regularly scheduled council meeting and go to our closed session at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn this special meeting until July 20th at 4:00 p.m.